Members of the board.
Morning.
It's nine thirty a.m. Today's Tuesday, May fifth. My name is Brian Zumwalt. I'm the director of the county's Office of Technology and Innovation. I'll be playing the role of technology moderator for today's virtual meeting. On the panel with me is Don Crowell from the County Attorney's Office. He'll be serving as process moderator. Before we get going with the meeting, I'd like to do a quick roll call and ensure we have adequate communications for each commissioner. Let's start with Commissioner Eggers.
Here.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
All right. How about Commissioner Seal?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Welsh.
Here.
Commissioner Long. Commissioner Long? Oh, you have to unmute.
Sorry about that. I thought I was. Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Commissioner Justice.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, sir. Commissioner Peters?
I'm here.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Gerard?
Good morning.
All right, it appears we have a quorum, Madam Chair. I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, great. I'd like to start this meeting with a moment of silence for those who are suffering from this disease or who have passed away. Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there that needs to be polled?
Move approval, madam chair.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Gerard, Commissioner Eggers, Welch and Eggers. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand aye. Thank you. That is unanimous. Item eight. Local state of emergency. Mr. Burton.
Morning, Commissioners. Item number eight is an extension, our local state of emergency. Obviously, the, we just passed this before. There are, it is carrying forward the restrictions in terms of social distancing on the beach, fifty percent capacity at the pools and the playgrounds continuing to be closed. We have an update regarding our numbers. Brian, you would show that chart?
Yes, sir. Give me one second here.
And, you know, as the Commissioners directed, we continue to look at our data and trying to make sure that we're making good decisions as we track our progress and as we begin to open things up to make sure that we're taking appropriate measures to keep our residents safe. As you can see from the chart, the people that are within that fourteen day symptomatic period continues to remain relatively low. The tests are continuing to ramp up and we're seeing increased testing. We'll actually see, and this is as of Sunday. So, beginning yesterday, you saw some increased testing sites. We'll continue to see our number of tests increase over the next several days. The percent positive continues to remain with unduplicated data. In other words, pulling out people that have been tested multiple times during that incubation period, again, continues to remain around two percent. And then you can see the number of cases by day. This is significantly less than our peak back on in early April. And so, we continue to watch this with sufficient hospital capacity with both beds, ventilators, and ICU. So, again, based upon this, we're not recommending any changes at this time. We would ask that we continue the state of emergency. We continue to watch what the governor does in terms of executive orders. I'm sure there's more to come on that as we begin to open up different pieces of our economy. The significant issue this week is obviously with the beaches and pools. The sheriff is on the line and he's prepared to provide you an update regarding the impact of the beach opening and his and the law enforcement response to that.
Okay. Chair.
Chair.
Morning Commissioners. So, beaches opened yesterday morning at seven a.m. We began staffing beaches with about three hundred law enforcement officers across the thirty-five miles of Pinellas County beaches. Fred Howard Park in Tarpon Springs, all the way down to Fort Soto, as well as Gandy Beach and the Courtney Campbell Causeway. So, the sheriff's office has about two hundred and fifty deputies out there and also participating are the Tarpon Springs Police Department, Clearwater Police Department, Worth Department, Treasure Island, and FHP. We have law enforcement officers at every single beach access point along Gulf Boulevard from Sankey all the way south to Passageway. We also have all parking lots staffed, as well as Gulf Boulevard. We're monitoring all the ingress and egress routes to the barrier islands, all the beaches and all the causeways. Yesterday was a successful day, but, you know, something that we can't lose sight of is it was a very busy day out there. And for a early May Monday, it was extremely busy, but everybody abided by the distancing requirements. People were following the rules. And really, for a first day of opening this after people not having been able to go to the beach for a period of time, I think it was a very successful opening and really want to thank the public for their cooperation and for following the rules with the distancing. So, so far, so good. But we know that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and coming up at the end of the week are going to be our greatest challenge, but we're prepared for it. And we know we've got the right number of people. We've got the right resources and the right operational plan. And with the public's continued cooperation and good spirit with it, we know that we'll have a successful weekend because we all want the same thing. I want people to be able to transition back in a healthy and safe way and also be out there so the businesses can again, begin to operate and hopefully thrive at some point. And the people have to be there for that. So, I think we're on the right track. We've got the right, again, the right resources in place. And we're committed to making sure that this is successful. We'll keep this type of an operation ongoing for at least the next week. And then we'll reevaluate it first part of next week and see where we are. To give you some of the specifics. I'd say yesterday, Fort, I'm sorry, Fred Howard Park was probably its peak, probably at about, and I'll get to these slides here in a second, Brian. No, that's fine. You can leave it up.
Okay.
Is that Fred Howard Park was probably, probably about eighty-five, ninety percent capacity yesterday. Dunedin Causeway was probably about ninety percent capacity, which is a lot for a Monday. Honeymoon Island opened yesterday. The state park opened out there in about fifty percent of capacity. Been in contact with the state, asked them to, especially as we come into the weekend, asked them to increase the capacity. They're going to allow the DEP secretary is receptive to that. Or trying to work out what numbers now they're willing to increase that by, within their capacity also to make sure of cleanliness and to manage the resources within the park. So, we got yesterday probably about twenty-eight hundred people in the park, which was just about at their three thousand capacity that they were going to allow. So, I hope to get it up somewhere around four thousand for the weekend because if we don't do that, it's just going to bottleneck people back into the causeway and further out. And we may be in a situation where we're going to have to shut that down because of capacity issues because you won't be able to add it. It will be social distance if it is just too packed and too many people there. So, looking closely at Dunedin Causeway. We're going to put about a hundred cones out there today to mark some parking areas and try and manage the traffic out there. The other areas of significance, St. Pete Beach, the city down there has about a thousand parking spots. In Passageway, the city commissioned a site, only opened about seven hundred of those, leave about three hundred closed, and it filled up very fast down there yesterday. And probably by noon, all seven hundred spots were full. People started trying to park in some of the side streets. But again, we have the deputies down there and we took care of that and they weren't able to park where they shouldn't in violation of the restrictions down there. We had to limit access to the Passageway area just to manage it. So, those are some of the big areas of what we saw. And we have some photographs that we took. The helicopters at least twice a day. We're going to do for sure, if not more, a passover of all of the areas, Gandy, Courtney Campbell, Fort Soto, Shell Key, Outback Key, all the beaches, all the way up in a noon flight and a three o'clock flight every day. So, we'll be able to share some of that video with you. We're going to release that video to the media as we did yesterday so people can see for themselves. One of the things that is obvious to us and we've known is that some of the ground images that people take are not necessarily in the right picture as to what's going on out there. It's just from the angle. And so, we want to point this out to you and point it out to everybody that it's a very different view from the air than it is from the ground in many of these situations. And that was obvious yesterday. And the picture that you have in front of you on the left is the exact same area of Clearwater Beach that you have in the view on the right. So, the view on the left is ground level view, taking a photograph of that same area that the helicopter is capturing at the same time up above. So, if you look at it on the left, it looks like a lot of people there. It's packed. It looks like people are crammed together. But when you look at the exact same view from up above, you can see that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And in fact, there's a lot of room out there on the beach for people to spread out as they were yesterday. So, we just want to point that out to everybody and ask everybody just to keep that in mind. And we're going to, for next week, be able to show you a lot more of this and accurately depict, I hope, what it is out there and what people are doing and doing it in the right way. Go ahead to the next slide, Brian. So, this is another ground level view that was taken just to the south of the Donces are in St. Pete Beach. And you can see, you know, what it looks like. It looks like that it's pretty dense. It looks like that there's a lot of people out there. Go to the next slide. And this is, you know, from the air and you can see again that they're spread out. So, there is no issues with what people are doing down there, even though from the ground level, it looks like it was maybe denser than what some may have liked. It was, there was plenty of space. Okay, go to the next one. And this is around noon, again, from the air above the Donces are. You can see that there's more unoccupied chairs than are occupied and the people who are there are adequately spread out. Next one. This is Dunedin Causeway, and this is about three o'clock yesterday afternoon. Again, a lot of cars, a lot of people. It was, it was pretty, pretty thick out there, but nothing that was unmanageable and nothing that was a problem. Just, you know, people hadn't been able to go there in a long time and they were wanting to get out and enjoy the sunshine, which is what we wanted to do. Go ahead. And this is Fred Howard Park again, about three o'clock yesterday. You can see the parking lot is still pretty full. And I'd say they got up, like you said, to about eighty-five, ninety percent of capacity. And I imagine this weekend Fred Howard will be, I know it'll be very busy out there, but we'll manage the capacity. And this is part of the plan of what we're doing. I think that's the last one, the last slide we have. And part of the plan of this is, is to manage it so that there's not an opportunity for there to be so many people that they can't socially distance. So, what the deputies have been told is they are stationed at all these access points is, is that they own that swath of beach from the access point to the Gulf and own it. I mean, they're responsible for it. And if it gets to a point where there's too many people where they cannot socially distance, then we're going to close off that area and ask them to move to another area where there is room and there is space. So, we're going to be moving people around to make sure that we don't run into a situation where they can't abide by the order and that they remain in groups of less than ten and six feet apart. Same thing with parking areas and same thing with access itself. So, if we have to narrow it, we will, just to make sure this is done in a safe way and it's a controlled environment. So, I think for the first day, very successful, and we look forward to having a successful, I'll call it an implementation week of this. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I think it gives you an overview of where we are, at least in the opening stages of opening the beaches.
Commissioners, we produced over a thousand signs that talk about the social distancing requirements, the rules for the beach. We also have big four by eight signs. We've ordered some, more are coming. So, those will continue to be installed at every access out on the beach to where, you know, just a friendly reminder to people to spread out and be responsible.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Eggers?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick comment on your, the numbers that you posted at the very beginning, Barry. What, do we have a sense of the same numbers as it relates to our long-term care facilities versus the overall number, just to have that feel? And then, any particular issues that you may be seeing, continuing to see at the long-term care facilities and what we might be doing to, 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 to take care of the problem proactively and reactively?
So, we have a hundred and fifty-seven as of Sunday, positive cases at our long-term care facilities. So, that, you know, you sort of crack that out of the seven sixty-six number. The long-term care facilities, we're doing an inspection of everyone. We've gotten great cooperation, working in conjunction and in partnership with our long-term care facility, with our fire and EMS staff who are conducting those inspections. Again, you know, having a physical touch, making sure they have the PPE necessary to have safe operations. Where they are short on supplies, making sure that they put in the request, we're the EOC, and make sure that they know we're there to support them. And so, that continues to be, obviously, as reported early on, we had a few issues at a few facilities. Dr. Cho is on the line. They, they have addressed those. They're working with those facilities. We decompressed when we needed to, making sure they have proper oversight to, to put residents back in a safe environment. So, those issues are being addressed for the vast majority. People are doing it right and we're making sure though that we have a physical touch with them, make sure that we can support them where they can continue their operations in a safe manner.
Would you say the, the, their ability to deal with infections, the normal infections is, is one, one ability? And then the ability to deal with these airborne infections and their preparedness for it has been kind of at a different level, just in general?
Yeah, I'll let Dr. Cho certainly add to that. He is, you know, the expert of the little ones going out and looking at these. But in fact, controls infection control, whether it's the flu or this case, they should have proper procedures in place to be able to deal with any type of thing that could spread. Dr. Jameson is on the line also. And so, any facility should have procedures in place on the PPE and, and the procedures necessary to contain that within the facility and manage it. That's what we're checking and to make sure. But I would let Dr. Cho, certainly expound upon that or Dr. Jameson.
So, I can chime in here. It's been a great partnership. We have a lot, a group of community partners really working to address that, including the hospitals, the EMS, emergency management. EMS Fire have done a tremendous job. They've touched face-to-face a hundred and eighty-seven facilities with three hundred and seventy-six contacts, a few of which they've come, doubled back to. It's, a lot of it is a training piece, making sure that they do have the appropriate PPEs available. And for those that aren't meeting those standards, we also bring in regional and statewide teams to support their efforts, including a infection prevention specialists, clinical augmentation teams to those that need the extra help. So, I think it's going to be an ongoing thing and I'm appreciative for all the partnerships really working to tackle this.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank the sheriff for the extraordinary effort to keep folks safe. No one can say they didn't know about social distancing, so thank you for that. Same question as Commissioner Eggers had, going back to Barry's initial slide. Can we get a copy of that? Because I don't think we have that document.
It wasn't uploaded until this morning, but yes, it should be uploaded now and available for you.
If we refresh, it'll be there?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question on that. Is there more detailed data on the testing in terms of demographics, zip codes, that kind of thing, that we can actually get a better idea of who's taking advantage of the testing?
I'll defer to Dr. Cho in terms of the demographic type of information that is available. One piece that we are going to break down in great detail is with our long-term care. So, we want to be able, but it's going to be a manual process and there's such a lag in getting information out of the state. So, we're going to report that out to you every Friday. And that will then, you know, make sure we have it deduplicated and so we can understand changes in the community and whether that's coming from the increased oversight at our long-term care facility or is that, you know, community issues. That, that'll be a manual process. We're going to get the report by Thursday. I'm going to report it out to you guys on Friday. But again, that's a manual process. So, this will be the first week for that. They're working on it right now.
Okay. That would really, what would be helpful, I mean, there's a lot of data out on the Department of Health website that you can drill down on. And I'd really like to see for the Pinellas number, some zip code information, demographics, race, if that kind of data is there. It helps us understand who's actually taking advantage of the testing. So, if that's available, if you can include that in your report as well.
We'll look at it, but I'll, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Cho to see if he knows.
Okay.
So, as sort of Barry alluded to, I think one of the limitations with the testing is that it's done by a lot of different sources, whether it's DOH, whether it's the private sector. So, getting some of that demographic information, it can be tough. For example, the last number I looked at, there was about, of the racial demographics on testing, forty-two percent were unknown demographics, but of the knowns, and I don't want to say the wrong thing, can certainly share the information when I get it, is of, of the sixteen thousand eight hundred tested thus far, according to the DOH report, twelve percent of the knowns have been African-American. I think eight to nine percent Hispanic, but I can get you a breakdown when I look at it. In terms of the zip code level testing, I'd have to see what we can get. But I'll circle back with you on that.
We have a, we have a data analytics team, Commissioner. I'll, I'll turn this over to him and ask them to dig into that. Dr. Cho's staff and my staff are part of that. So, we'll certainly ask for that and see what information's available.
I appreciate it. The last question, Madam Chair, I had is on the order. And I just got pass coded out of my iPad. So, we had mentioned a recommendation for masks. Where are we in communicating both, you know, the recommendation that folks use masks in public places and kind of a fact on what the right type of mask to use and what situation to use it in? But just where are we in that process?
Well, the last week with the, with the addition to the order that, that you had, had us change, so we put that into all of our material that, in fact, you know, you're, you're encouraged when you're in the public to wear masks and certainly if you feel uncomfortable. So, we've had PSTAs in multiple languages, or PSAs. Yeah, PSAs. Well, Barbara's writing up on a board, so I'm trying to read and talk.
Okay.
But, and reminding me, but, so we've had PSAs out, but we've put it in all of our material. And we do have a, a guide for people, so please turn into our website. And that, that talks about things that we encourage. But, and all the types of preventative things, you know, everything from washing your hands to face coverings and others. So, there's information out there if we can, you know, get, get folks to, to tag on to it. But yeah, we, we continue to push those things and we've added that since then.
If you could send us the latest, we'll, you know, get that out on social media as well, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And our social media expert.
You heard that, Charlie?
Well, he's more prolific than Charlie is.
I like that.
I have a, I have a question about the community health centers. They just started yesterday doing walk-in testing. What, which locations are they?
We have three locations and I'm going to pull that up here. To answer your questions. Let me get that in a second for you. I'm not seeing it on my iPad, but I don't want to give out any correct. Because we have three testing sites. One is seven oh seven East Drew Road in Clearwater, seventy-five fifty forty Third Street and Pennels Park and thirteen forty-four Twenty-Second Street South in St. Petersburg. Those are the three sites that began yesterday through the community health centers. And then an additional site will start next Monday. That is an Advent site and that'll be at St. Petersburg College and Tarpon Springs.
Great. If we're going to advertise those, we probably should use the common name for those facilities.
Johnny Ruth Clark.
Johnny, yeah, I mean. So, people know, they may not know the address, but they know the name. Yes, and in addition, at the Pinellas County Health Department, aren't they having three, at least three locations as well? And are those walk-up or appointment only?
I can speak on that. So, we're going to continue to do mainly appointment only, but we will triage as needed. So, it's going to be at our St. Petersburg site, the Mid-County site, as well as our Clearwater site. We're going to continue to work with the community partners. Keep in mind, their Bay Care still has the Carolin site. So, with all these efforts going on with the new additional sites, we're, our goal is to really develop that robust testing. Additionally, I think what the health department is going to continue to look for opportunities to do the smaller outreaches similar to what we did this past weekend. So, we're going to continue to work with jurisdictions on putting those together as well.
And the turnaround time for finding out the test results?
The, it's variable depending on, for the DOH sites, if it's sent to the DOH labs, it's about two to three days. If some of them, and people that use the private sector, it can take a little bit longer, about seven to ten days at the, at the longest. And, and regarding Advent, I can't speak to that turnaround time, but it really depends on the site and where you're sending the labs to.
Well, we're thankful that you've ramped up the testing and that we have a lot of partners now working on that and that some sites can take anyone who would like to have a test. Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, just on that same topic, had somebody call specifically asking about the Dunedin, but Greenwood area as well. So, if you're a resident in that area, I'm assuming that the closest location at this point would be the Department of Health site by appointment only. That's a question. And then the second question is, is at the other community health locations, are we, are they doing appointment only there for these testing or are they just testing it just at those three sites? In other words, there's a, there's a DOH, or excuse me, there's a, the community health in Dunedin, but they're not testing there? Or is it a drive-by testing? What, what kind of thing are the other community health centers doing? Those are the two questions I had.
Hi, Dr. Cho.
My understanding is I think they're centralizing it to those three locations. I'm not sure what their plans are. We can circle back with you on that, on, on expanding. I think they were looking at a fourth site, but not necessarily the one in Dunedin. But it.
And, go ahead.
Go ahead. But again, I'll, we'll get back to you on that when we talk to our community partners. And to answer your early question with the Greenwood site, at least from the DOH side, it would be the Clearwater side. So, again, anyone of, in terms of information, in terms of testing, we encourage people to call our number at eight two four six nine zero zero.
But again, just so for clarification, there's no other site closer than the DOH site. I mean, we should know that. So, I'm assuming that that's the case. If that's not the case, then we need to let folks know where they, if they call that number, where they can go that's even closer. So, just, I'm just saying. Thank you.
Commissioner Seal?
Yeah, just for your information and for Commissioner Eggers, the Community Health Center on Druid is at Druid and Drew Street. So, that would be very accessible for anyone from the Greenwood area and also probably a closer site for those in Dunedin. So, the South Dunedin.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
I'm sorry, are we going to be talking about the, the CARES program at this point or later, Barry?
I can certainly update about it now if you wish.
I'd just like to hear first a little update, and then I had a specific question about a business that, that doesn't have bricks and mortar, but they, they park their, they park their charter vehicle at a, I'm assuming they, at a marina and they pay rent and everything like. at a marina and they pay rent and everything like that. I would, would those, would that person qualify? That's their bricks and mortar, but I, I just a question. But if you could give us an update, that would be, that would be great.
Sure. So, um, obviously the, the, and it's actually, there's, um, a couple of items on the agenda. One is to appropriate the monies. That's up to a hundred and seventy million that we received for CARES Act funding. We did open up, uh, two rounds of funding, uh, for phase one that, uh, targets for businesses. Uh, that grant program began and, um, comes through our small business program and our economic development department. Uh, the other one is through for individual assistance. Again, the business side provides five thousand dollars. Um, if you've been impacted by COVID, um, it, it does require a brick and mortar location. Um, and, but the, again, we'll have to take up individual questions like that and have it have to get to the team in terms of how they're handling that. So, uh, we, I can follow up with you on that individual question. On the individual assistance, provide up to four thousand dollars. We'll provide, um, direct assistance to, or mortgage or, you know, uh, different types of payments, utilities and things like that, uh, to allow a bridge for people that need assistance while, you know, applying for unemployment or other types of assistance. Um, so both those programs up, that is through our two-one-one center. Um, so people can, uh, type in, um, eight nine eight, uh, two-one-one and type in COVID CARES and, and, and begin that process. It's also a link on our website. Um, and we can provide assistance and, and help individuals, uh, during this time. Both those programs are up. The sites have been very, very active. Um, we have ramped up our, uh, staffing, um, both, uh, with other staff from other departments. Um, and so both of those, um, are, uh, receiving a lot of, um, uh, contact. And we certainly hope to process those quickly and give people the assistance that they need.
Yeah, I just, I was, uh, hearing from a few people that said that they had gotten online, um, and seemed to be going pretty smoothly. I'm talking about the business, uh, side. Um, and, and, uh, pretty non-complicated, uh, actually, and, uh, pretty straightforward. Um, in some numbers that you had spoken about earlier, just to give other folks a sense of of hope that there really are some good numbers going in. We had a, a number of applications even already and some are already being processed. So I was just curious if you could just, I know that we're real early in the numbers, but maybe you could just touch on that so people can understand that. Yeah, we're already processing some and taking other applications, so.
So we've had for the small business program, um, staff's bringing me numbers. Um, we've had twenty-two hundred and fourteen applications of, uh, fifteen hundred and twelve have been, um, submitted. Seven hundred and two are in process, uh, right now. Um, so thirty-nine have already been approved and submitted for payment of the others. They're, uh, following up and getting the details necessary to be able to process them. Um, on the individual assistance, we've had over, uh, fifty-three hundred calls, uh, to, to, to two-one-one, either by text or calls. And so, uh, again, we're, oh, fifty-three hundred calls, three thousand texts that begin, began that process. So again, a significant, um, response and we're hopeful to process them and get, uh, the key is to get people the assistance quickly. And so we're doing everything we can to staff up and make sure we process that and, and, and provide help, uh, for folks in a, in a real timely manner. So we're very hopeful that, um, are, that, that we were able to move that and process that, um, again, timely for folks.
Yeah, thank you, Barry. I just would encourage folks on, on the business side, certainly that I know they've had some frustrations and other programs and applying for other programs, but there seems to be a real quick turnaround here and I, it's not a whole lot of money, but it's, every little bit helps, uh, at this point. So would encourage people to at least check into it and, uh, get a, uh, get your application.
And just to, to that point, this is not the state or federal programs. And so there's been a lot of problems with the PPP, um, you know, program going through banks and other programs. This is a, a little bridge. It's a little bit of money that commissioners you authorize, but it's to help people get to where those other programs kick in. And so we did test the system to make sure that we don't have a system that crashes or something like that. Um, and we tried to make it simple to where we can get, get people assistance quickly. So please, um, if you've been impacted by COVID, uh, please call either program and we would, uh, happily try to assist.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Okay, do we have any public that wants to speak?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item, uh, please indicate your willingness to do so by hitting star nine on the phone or hit the raise hand button in your Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there is no members of the public that wish to speak on this item.
Okay. No comment. Um, okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
And move the resolution.
Commissioner Welch. Second, I'm Commissioner Welch, uh, second from Commissioner Seal. Okay, all in favor indicate by raising your hand and saying so. I, okay, opposed? Right. Okay, next issue.
Item number nine is a resolution approving a qualified applicant for the Qualified Target Industry Tax Refund Program.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. Are there any questions? Do we have any comments from the public?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on the agenda item number nine, please hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, it doesn't appear there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this item.
Okay. That being said, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Item ten.
Item ten is a resolution to supplement the two thousand twenty budget and various fund from unanticipated revenue from the coronavirus aid relief and economic security CARES Act. Um, some of the program monies, uh, we have talked about. So, uh, this provides a total increase of a hundred and seventy, a little over a hundred and seventy million. And the general fund provides six hundred and eighty-four thousand for health, um, healthcare for the homeless. Specific for these funds has not been determined yet. Forty-three thousand, uh, for the Tampa Bay Resiliency Fund for food, food and incidental, um, supplies. An increase in one point six million dollars for emergency medical services fund related to healthcare-related expenses and well, and revenue, um, loss attributable with COVID. And then finally, uh, two point two million in the community development grant fund. One point four million, uh, will be provided for, um, services for seniors and the homeless and public health services. And seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the emergency solutions grant. Um, all of these will come back to you with specific programming, um, priorities, uh, once we, those have been determined. Uh, and we'll have a specific grant, um, authorization from you and in order to actually, um, put out an RFP or, um, an expenditure contract for the use of those funds.
Have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Eggers.
Um, yeah, uh, Barry, all the programs and the monies that we've gotten in, um, I know that there are a lot of food pantries out there that are, that are doing, uh, some really amazing work, a lot of residents helping out and, and donations, but also in distributing foods. They're all independent nonprofit groups, but looking to have those distributions, uh, centers, um, enforced, if you will. Is there any funding that we have available to, uh, that we can, um, make available to help these folks and, uh, in staffing up their, their inventory of food and, and, and the like?
So, Dean, so under the original amount, as we talked about, we're gonna have phase one and, you know, part of the, the second was to have a phase two. We've already started talking at your direction about a committee that would be inclusive of nonprofits, um, home-based businesses and others. Uh, where we talk about dependent on the availability of funding and also in fact, if there's a second round of federal funding. Um, but we're also looking at pantries and others, uh, from the CDBG funds that we, that we just talked about. Um, that might be a good use of those funds. We're also looking at homelessness and the impacts, um, that, that that has had on, on folks and whether or not we can, um, apply funding for that. We're seeking ideas right now and that's for the two point two million. Um, and we're gonna come back to you with a specific strategy and we, uh, since we just received that, we put it on for the appropriation, but we, we don't have a recommendation in terms of how we would recommend we expend those dollars at this time, but that is certainly one of the things we are looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Did I ask if we have people to speak? Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Just on the CDBG, is there a separate allocation for cities like St. Pete under that portion of the funding?
An entitlement community. I believe St. Pete, um, is, um, an entitlement community. They would have their own allocation.
You've got a separate, okay.
I, I, I think so. I, I'm, I don't want to misspeak, but I, I believe they're an entitlement community, uh, them and Clearwater.
And Largo.
And Largo. Okay, so those three, yeah. And so, so any, any, they'll, they'll have their own allocation, right?
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item, please indicate so by hitting star nine on your phone or hitting the virtual raise hand button in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, I don't see anybody that wishes to speak on this item.
Yeah, I will entertain a motion then.
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Eggers, second from Commissioner Welch. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item eleven.
This is change order number one to a contract with Pepper Contracting Services for the Forest Lake Boulevard Phase Two project. Um, this is a significant change order. So, so right up front. Um, this extends, um, increases the contract by four million dollars, bringing the contract total to a little over twelve million. Um, I'm sorry, um, the original contract was twelve million, so bringing the total to sixteen million. Uh, what happened on this is, uh, this is a, um, going from a two-lane road to a four-lane road. They did the engineering, their initial engineering. They then, um, they, as part of that had soil testing, soil borings. As part of that work, um, when they got out on site, we had, um, bad soils in many of the spots. Um, and, and so in between areas that they had, um, done soil borings, other areas were simply bad. So it wasn't indicative of, of the entire section of road that they're rehabilitating that significantly increased the, the project cost, um, and this change order is a result. Uh, Kelly Levy is on the line and prepared to answer any questions.
Uh, Commissioner Seal. Um, yes, in the background documentation, it does not identify where the four point one million is coming from. I assume it's penny monies.
Correct. Uh, Kelly, Kelly's on the line. I'd let her answer that, but yeah, it's gonna be penny money.
Kelly, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, well, for me, uh, from my perspective, this is unacceptable. Um, I, I just can't imagine that, uh, enough testing or enough detailed testing wasn't done to anticipate this kind of problem. Uh, it's not like, um, geotechnical engineering is new. Uh, it's something that should be done expansively, so we don't have this issue. So I know some of the background said that that's still being looked into. Um, and certainly, certainly hope that, that, you know, we, we take a look at that, uh, review program so that we make sure that, um, we, we have this thing covered. Any comments, Kelly, on just the experience that we have with this problem, maybe in other projects or, or, and maybe it's, maybe it's normal in, in, uh, our Florida. Thank you.
Um, you know, the, as, as Barry mentioned, there was a significant geotechnical work that was done along the project corridor. Um, I've first, I just, I personally have read the report, um, to try to see if there was, um, something that was missed. And we are gonna take a look at that in more detail, to your point. Um, you know, should there have been, um, more geotechnical work done, given the history of this area and the development, um, you know, this portions of this road corridor used to be a wetland and material was brought in and filled. Um, so, you know, how did that play in? Uh, there are specific recommendations in the geotechnical report regarding pavement design and some of the material, um, being, you know, more plastic, um, meaning that it's gonna shift. It's, it's problematic for road construction. And that's exactly what happened. So we need to look and see, you know, where, where the recommendations of the geotechnical firm followed. And so we do need to follow up on all of that and look to see, you know, as it says in the agenda item that, you know, to see if there was any responsibility, uh, from the engineering firm, um, with regard to that as well as, um, the delay. So we will be taking a very close look at that.
But Commissioner, to your point, you know, it is unacceptable, um, to have a project, um, increased cost like this at that much. So we are looking at that. This began before Kelly, um, when Rahim is here, we talked about it that in great detail on how something that like that could occur. Um, and he assured us that they did have the geotechnical borings, et cetera and stuff, and literally, you know, um, what you would think is standard soils throughout an area wasn't. But, but again, it's also the way in which you contract to where you ship that risk. Um, and so there's liability on those that, uh, choose to contract with us. Um, and they assume some of that versus that being on our side. So we've looked at it both from a legal standpoint. We've looked at it from a, uh, contract management standpoint. Uh, but we're also gonna look at it from a process standpoint and make sure that, uh, something like this doesn't happen again.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Thank you, Kelly.
Commissioner Seal. Just from a point of history, I remember when we were going, we, we actually accelerated redoing this road and expanding it above some other projects because we knew that there were some conditions there. Um, however, it appears that it's been worse than we anticipated. I guess at this point, I just want some assurances that this fix will be truly a fix and that we aren't gonna have, um, future problems, that we are constructing this properly at this point with the change order. Thank you.
We, um, you know, again, very good point, Commissioner Seal. And yes, um, basically with this change order, you know, we assume that the, the length of, um, the limits of the project, that this is material that's all gonna have to be removed and it's going to be geotechnically reinforced so that that doesn't happen again. Um, you know, as Barry did say, you know, some of this is, uh, you know, this would, this material was out there. So even if we had been able to map every single area of unsuitable material, um, the bid would have been higher than what we were originally looking at because of the deficiencies in the soils, but.
And that, and that's actually a good point, you know, this, if, if, so this is no more than what it would have been had we done the proper borings because it was bad material. It's not acceptable in the process. We should have known that. We should have been able to tell you that upfront. Um, but the cost, you know, is what it is because of having to take material out and putting new, new material away. Um, but, but we're gonna, from a process standpoint, absolutely, we're gonna look at this very, very hard.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any public that would like to?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on agenda item number eleven, uh, please hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, it doesn't appear that we have any members of the public that wish to speak.
Okay. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, I, you know, I'll make a motion to approve this, but, uh, you know, following up a little bit with what Commissioner Seal said, uh, um, you know, I guess doing it right is, uh, much better than doing it fast at this point. So Barry, I just, you know, let's, let's have several different eyes on this and get, and maybe even if we have to get a couple of different opinions, uh, it'd be a lot better now than having to do it a third time. So, um, just let's take our time, make sure this is done right. Approving this should not be a, let's just go forward as fast as we can kind of approval. This is, uh, do it, do it right and carefully. Thank you. I make a motion to approve.
Right. Yes. Commissioner Long? Is that a second, Commissioner Long?
Yes, it was a second. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion from Commissioner Eggers, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please raise your hand. Say, say, all right, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Um, item twelve.
The grant application to the US Department of Transportation, uh, this is up to twenty-five million for the, uh, Dunedin Causeway Bridge. Um, uh, the, the next question obviously is how we're gonna pay for the rest. Um, but absent getting this funding, then it's, uh, really hard to even envision coming up with the funding. So we want to get this application in. If successful, that'll tell us the gap analysis, uh, analysis we have to do to come up with additional funding for completion of this project, but this has a time period to it and we wanted to make this application. for completion of this project. But this has a time period to it and we wanted to make this application.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems like we've been talking about this project for as long as I remember being on the county commission. And I know that a lot of us have had, over the course of the years, we've talked about it, concerns about the remaining 60, almost 62 million dollars. And I'm assuming that the majority of that will come from the penny money. That said, is there any portion of this that is picked up by the city of Dunedin?
I'm going to turn, Kelly, I don't know if you know the background of this project. I certainly don't know the answer to that at this point.
Right now, there is no funding coming from the city of Dunedin. We are, you know, with regard to this grant application, we have reached out to the Department of Transportation to talk about this project specifically. The department has indicated that this would be a very attractive project for any stimulus dollars that come forward. And that having this grant, if we were successful in getting this grant approved, that would, again, help the cause, so.
So, follow up, Madam Chair. So Kelly, thank you for that information. And when you said Department of Transportation, I'm assuming you meant FDOT?
Correct, FDOT. And we'll also have to reach out to the Federal Highway Administration as well. So we want to position ourselves well for this project for any stimulus dollars that might come our way.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Seal.
Yes, I just want to note that this is a county-owned bridge. And so therefore, it would be up to us to seek the funding and to build it. It's not dissimilar to bridges going to Bel Air Beach, to Indian Rocks Beach, et cetera. Park Boulevard Bridge, all owned by the county. But what I did know in the background is in fiscal year 21 to 26, our capital improvement program, we have about 29 million, which would leave about 22 million unfunded. So as, I guess my question out of all of this and analyzing it, does DOT, if we get the grant, do we have a timeline as to when we would have to start the project and use the money? The 25 billion grant, if we get it? Because I'm concerned about that timing.
Yeah, they, we have three years to obligate. So if it were approved, you know, then the clock would start ticking at that point.
Okay, and at this point, where are we in the design phase as far as being shovel-ready per se?
Well, we just finished the PD and E process and had the public hearing right before. You know, in-person meetings were, have been canceled since. All of that documentation has been submitted to the environmental management group within DOT. And we're expecting them to approve that, the NEPA process. And that's kind of the process that then makes us eligible for the funding. We're expecting, you know, to start that design, full design process in June.
In June, okay.
Approval is in place from DOT.
So, so that I make sure that I understood what you just said. So we still have to do the NEPA process?
We, we finished that.
Finished that.
Yeah, we finished that part of that. At the end of that process, we needed to have the public hearing, which we, which we completed. And then, then there's that public comment period. We're expecting to get that approval in June.
Okay, excellent. Well, it's good we got through the NEPA process because that's typically pretty long.
Yeah.
So thank you very much to everyone.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Seal. I was going to ask about the timeline and then also make the comment about the fact that it is a county bridge. The other question I was going to ask, and I think I remember back in the very beginning, that we seem to talk about the fact that the bridges, for the most part, like this, are funded somewhere through grant funding, about 80% of the total cost. Is that something that you can verify, Kelly? Is that something that we kind of expect? Is the funding amount for bridges been cut back in general? Or what's the issue as far as finding funding for this bridge? Thank you.
Yes, I, I mean, my understanding is that, is that overall, you know, bridge funding, you know, had been cut back. Right now, we're hoping for, you know, stimulus, the stimulus package would restore some of that funding that, that was historically in place.
So it was, it was kind of tied to the overall infrastructure shortfall that we've been experiencing in the country overall? You would think that that, that's the funding source for this kind of infrastructure improvement?
I'm not sure what ultimately led to the reduction in funding to bridges overall. But yes, that is, you know, what we are, you know, hoping for. We're staying in close contact with the state and our federal partners to make sure, again, that, that we're ready when they're ready.
Certainly be nice to have the state as a partner as well, since it does go to one of those fairly busy, large state parks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long.
Kelly, could you just refresh my mind on which level of the three different designs we finally decided to go with?
The mid, the mid-level bascule?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have anybody from the public?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item, please indicate so by raising your hand in the virtual Zoom meeting or hitting star nine on your phone. And Madam Chair, we do have one member of the public that wishes to speak. Our first speaker is Marilyn Terman. Ms. Terman, if you could go ahead and give us your name, first and last, spelling, address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, this is Marilyn Terman, Clearwater, Florida. Yes, and I apologize, my comment is not on this particular subject, but I was having difficulty clicking in. And I know you've already, and I don't think it was really an issue of what you've already voted on. But Commissioner Welch had asked a question about the reallocation or the allocation of CDBG funds to support the small businesses who did not fit in the scope of what Phase One included. And so my, I believe Mr. Burton commented that, that those funds would not be reallocated, but it would be from a different pot? Or was, was your response, you weren't sure? Because I had a conversation yesterday that if those funds are reallocated to those businesses that didn't fall within this scope, then those other organizations would, would be, you know, they would no longer be eligible for the funding. I just wanted to get clarification on, because someone asked me about that.
Barry, you want to attempt that one? I think.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't think we're talking about CDBG.
Yeah, we're talking about, I think, I believe you're talking about two different pots of funds. So the CDBG dollars is about $2 million. So it's in the scheme of, you know, a county of a million people. It's a fairly small amount. So we're looking at, that's where we're talking about possibly food charities or others. And so we're, we're still going to look at that. What we're talking about with CARES Act funding, that's 170 million. We are trying to get the assistance out to both businesses and individuals. Once, once that process is complete, we have, they have until June 1st to apply. Once we see the funding allocation through that program, we're going to begin a process now to talk about what a Phase Two would look like. And that would be to allocate the remaining funds once the first round is closed. That's where we'll be looking at home-based businesses, others, nonprofits and others that weren't eligible under the first round. And so we have began, we're just now beginning to talk about what a committee or what an input process would look like. So there'll be more to come on that in the, in the coming weeks.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
Madam Chair, there are no other members of the public that wish to speak on agenda item 12.
Well, okay, well, I will entertain a motion then.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item 13.
This is approval for the Director of Safety and Emergency Services to submit the investigation to accept the 1.6 million dollars and the coronavirus relief funds as we previously appropriated in that item number 10.
Yes, Commissioner Long.
Move approval.
Oh. Okay, we have a motion and a second, but do we have any public that wants to speak to this?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this agenda item, please hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, I don't see any members of the public that wish to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no questions, all in favor, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Item 14, appointment to emergency medical services board council. I believe.
Move approval for Mayor Alahousses to replace Mayor Bujowski on that board.
Second.
Okay. We have a. Sorry. We have a motion from Commissioner Eggers, second from Commissioner Long. Do I need to ask for input on this? Do we have any public?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this item, please hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there are no members of the public that wish to speak on this item.
Okay. We will take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We're getting good at this. Item carries unanimously. Item 15.
Under item number 15, I recommend that the board approve staff's recommendation on the proposed settlement consistent with the conversations I've had with each one of you.
Is it pretty?
We have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. Do I need to ask for input?
Yeah.
Jules, Jules shaking her head, yes. At this, at this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on agenda item number 15, please indicate your willingness to speak by pressing star nine on the phone or raising your hand virtually. And Madam Chair, there are no members of the public that wish to speak on this item.
Thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Madam Attorney, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else.
Hey, Mr. Burton.
Commissioners, this week is National Public Service Week. And I really want to thank all of our public employees. Now, our public employees are listed as essential and critical workers under the essential critical infrastructure workforce. And for you, it's no surprise that they're doing amazing things every single day to keep our government going. There are so many different things that we take for granted, that, you know, the, from utilities to lights and everything else that are continuing to work as, as we deal with this pandemic. I want to really thank our first responders, our EMS, our firefighters, our law enforcement, our 911 operators for all the things that they do to continue to make our county function. But we have so many other employees that are working behind the scenes. Like I said, our public works, workers, our utilities, planning, and the logistics centers. I talked about nursing home earlier on, but there's a lot of staff that have been redeployed to operate warehouses and getting, you know, PPE out to our first responders, out to our nursing homes, to our medical personnel. So a lot of people are working behind the scenes to make that happen. Our administrative staff, we're having a virtual meeting, our IT staff, our budget folks that are applying and receiving the funds and making sure it gets to the people needed. And many, many other internal service departments that are working to serve our citizens. And they're doing so because they care. They, they're doing so because they're dedicated and they really want to do their part to help make everything work well. We have employees that are working hard to process the payments that we just talked about under the CARES Act. And staff that have been redeployed from departments to go out and help in this. So we have an employee group that has a can-do attitude during these unique times. That is nothing really short of inspiring. So I'm very proud to work alongside them. And I'm very proud of having such a dedicated staff to continue to make us, you know, function well. And so thank you to all of our employees for everything that you do. That's the end of my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And please let them know that we appreciate them just as much. We know how hard they're working behind the scenes. And we do have one piece of new business. Is any? Commissioner Peters, were you raising your hand or fixing your screen?
I was just fixing my screen. I got.
All right.
So I had to re-log in. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Anybody else have anything? Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Just a quick comment, and I couldn't agree more with what Barry said, but this has been such a great, I think, example of how we work together as a community. And thank you for your leadership as well, Madam Chair. I know you didn't sign up for this necessarily. But I just wanted to highlight, you know, there's so many great groups that are doing work. But I mentioned to you that last weekend, I gave greetings on behalf of the commission to Feeding Tampa Bay and their volunteers. I just wanted to relay some stats that Matt Spence gave me. That morning, they served 1,600 families. And I can tell you, when I pulled up at 7:30 in the morning, the line of cars was about five blocks long for folks lining up. And so that really emphasizes to me how important it is that Barry and his team have gotten that CARES Act money, you know, through to people, because a lot of folks are really hurting. They are serving 2 million meals per week in Tampa Bay, including a half million a week in Pinellas County. They're serving about 48,000 meals to folks who are self-quarantined, our seniors. And they're partnering with Steve Westfall and the Hangar Restaurant to do that. So I just wanted to highlight that one of many groups that are doing some great work in our community to help us get through this. I just wanted to highlight that. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers, and then Commissioner Long.
Yeah, I also wanted to echo what Barry said about the medical community, frontline responders, policemen, deputies, and our employees. Just unbelievable. And I was just going, the only other comment I was going to make is along the line of the CARES program and the number of folks that are really working hard there. And then I know that we all have just continued to be amazed by our residents and how they've stepped up to, you know, the quote-unquote, what we were supposed to do is flatten this curve, and they did it. I just, you know, I just, I've talked to people around the country, but friends and family, and just amazing what we've done as a country. But really, this community has just been, the residents have been amazing. So I just continue to ask you to be responsible, be careful, and be respectful of each other, of our differences. So we do have some difference of opinion, but be respectful of everybody. I think we can get through this as well as possible. But that's all I had, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have just a couple of things. First, I wanted to commend Commissioner Welch for his participation in Feeding Tampa Bay week before last. And last Saturday, I also was at the Feeding Tampa Bay event at Tropicana Field. Same issue with the cars wrapped around the blocks for as far as you could see. And they were anticipating, and we did serve between 1,500 and 2,000 people on Saturday. People were incredibly grateful. There were people in the line who had never, ever, ever needed assistance before and had no idea or could ever have anticipated that they would need it now. And so it was extremely rewarding and very eventful. And I hope that all of you will take a chance to participate as we move forward. Because collectively together, that's how we're going to end up on the other side of this thing. And I do also want to chime in and just say kudos to all of the first responders and law enforcement people. I was out on the water over the weekend. And oh my goodness, the sheriff's department were out there, and you all remember, it got pretty hot at the middle of the day, and they were there with their long sleeves and black vest on. I just felt so sorry for them, but they were so busy and so caring and so responsible and thoughtful with all of the citizens in terms of trying to help them. So, and yesterday, I just. So, and yesterday, I just quite by accident came upon with my daughter and my granddaughter, a very historical, emotional, and just poignant opportunity that I wanted to share with all of you. So Brian, if you have the pictures, this is just a little bit of what was going on on Reddington Shores yesterday. That's, this is the end of the Reddington Shores Pier. And for those of you who have lived here a while, you may remember that this pier was built in 1962. I was particularly enthralled with these little vehicles that were moving the debris as they finalized the demolition of the pier. And I took these pictures to show my little two-year-old grandson, because he just loves this kind of stuff. But it was remarkable listening to the folks that were standing there watching this going on. Because if you think about it, this is generations of our families, our elderly, our tourists, and our kids that have enjoyed fishing on that pier and watching the beautiful sunsets and just marveling at the quiet beauty of that spot. And I know that, and Brian, I, did you not have the picture, the last one, that you see the whole entire pier down through it? Because that is.
I do have that.
Yeah, can you just show that to everyone so that everybody knows what it used to look like? Because I have spent hours sitting right in that spot, looking through there in quiet moments of reflection and meditation and prayer. It was just the most calming, lovely place to sit and spend an afternoon. So my kids used to play in the sand with their little buckets, it's right there. And I don't know, I just thought it was kind of a poignant, happy little thing to share with everybody, especially now.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Long.
You're welcome.
Actually, it's good to know that it's down, not to downplay its significance over the years. It has been a bit of a hazard.
Absolutely. And there was debris falling in the water and kids climbing on all those things, you know, the foundation of it. So yes, I agree with you 100%. But it's pretty remarkable to know what was there and see it today and just kind of miss it already. Thank you.
Do we have anything else for the good of the order? If not, see you guys next time.
Ready?
We are adjourned.